I should put one of those in my thing, too. I don't know what it really means.
I don't know.
I don't want to tell you.
No, no. I'll come over.
Already?
The fourth.
Yeah.[24.12][24.12](Laughter).
I wouldn't even have remembered about the cup until like a week later.
Luckily, it was like, you know, it was like in my way when I was getting in my car. I was like, wait, wait, listen, wait.
What is this? I left my cup and chugged some water. I was training.
Oh, did you go? How was that?
I mean, I feel like if we actually take the time and will invest in an opportunity, we might have a way to bring in revenue.
I think their big plan was to change state law. Calling meeting in order. Roll call.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 19th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Moment of silent meditation.
Mr. President, I would like to ask our city to pray for the family of Sid Booker, who was outstanding athlete and a City of Erie graduate, of Edinburgh, passed recently. Thank you.
Moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you, first of all, grateful and thankful that you allowed us to assemble in these chambers today. We ask that by the power of your Spirit, you enable us to make good and wise decisions on the behalf of the City of Erie and its residents. We ask that you comfort those who mourn, to include the Booker family and all those others who have suffered loss during this time. We just ask for your help and for you to remember the least of us. And we ask this in your name. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 5th, 2023 city council meeting and bills for payment on April 21st and 28th, 2023. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? Do we have any repository sales? Moving on to public comments.
My name's Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. And this is a T-shirt with a quote by Judy Hume, who died last month. She says, "If you don't demand what you believe in for yourself, you're not going to get it." Surely, much of what I do related to the accessibility in the City of Erie is inspired by her life. I am curious what item three under ordinances for final passage, the $600,000, where it's going to go. I've been told it might be going for street reconstruction. I see that there's $111,000 that was originally allocated for curb ramps. That's going for curb, uh, for curb, street reconstruction. And $214,000 for community improvement money going to street reconstruction. Someone, I think Chuck told me that some of this is because some of this was money that wasn't believed it was going to be spent in time. When I worked for the U.S. Forest Service in the watershed program, we, I got, I got instruction from the Forest Office to always have shelf projects ready to go. And I would get, I'd get an email saying, "If we could give you $20,000, what would you do with it?" And I'd have something, and it'd be ready to go, and I got the money. I got to do some watershed restoration work. I got to do some flood proofing of forest roads because I had projects ready to go. So rather than just reprogramming money that should go for curb, curb ramps, not handicap curb ramps, curb ramps. There's no such thing as a handicap curb ramp. It's a curb ramp, by the way. But that's, that's a program that should be ongoing. And if you're looking for projects, there's a whole bunch of, on streets with no sidewalks identified in the active Erie plan. And those should be, there should be designs ready to go for those sidewalks. We talked about putting sidewalks around Braybender Park and the other parks that have no sidewalks. That's low-hanging fruit because there's no, no easements, no nothing. It's city property. Those should be designed and ready to go. So I encourage the city to have those kind of shelf projects rather than reprogramming, reprogramming that money. It's important that when we're putting a lot of energy into quality of life, part of the quality of life is having decent sidewalks. And I don't know how many times I've brought up, but there are many, many miles of non-residentially owned property adjacent, therefore maintain sidewalks that are in disrepair. Take a look at Raspberry. Take a look at 18th between Cranberry and Raspberry. Take a look at Buffalo Road and 18th Street. That's quality of life. We should not just be leaning on the residential properties. I would request that when the city posts items to Facebook, like the tree, tree plant, free trees and the other items, they also post to the Nextdoor app. I know that Mr. Milet, Miet has made that capability. I just urge you to always do that. I encourage the city to be aware of the EPA ethylene regulations that are up for public comment. And we have a contaminated area of the city because of ethylene, and somebody should be looking at that. As I've brought up many, many times, we need an ordinance related to sidewalk closures. I thought the Catholic Church, the 10th and 10th was all done. They're not. They're back at it. And they do not have a detectable warning. They have only a barrier without the lower bar. So somebody who is visually impaired would not detect that closure. How long did they get to close the street when Erie Downtown Development Corporation is able to put a sidewalk bypass on State Street? If they can do it on State Street, why does the Catholic Church not have to do it on 10th and 10th? It's ridiculous. I hope that the city has an ordinance addressing sidewalk closures soon. Also, a traffic mitigation ordinance. We have projects like IRG that are going to bring a lot of traffic into this town. Also, some of these, these, all these construction projects. We should have a traffic mitigation ordinance so that the city recoups the funds that have to do with that. Thank you for your time.
Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie. Honored councilmen and councilwomen, Mr. Mayor, administration, I wear this button in solidarity with those folks that are thinking of and want to make you aware of the childhood poverty issues, the poverty issues we have. Every day, in every way, you should be thinking how you can mitigate this situation. We can't be the best we can be if we've got 44% of folks in poverty. I also wanted to highlight for you. I've been in conversation with Father Jerry Pescaro over at St. Anne's. He continues to have trouble with Accuride and the noise problem over there. He's at the point now where they don't respond to him or anybody in his watch group. And so they need some help. I understand that the EPA is coming to town to meet with Accuride next Tuesday. And I've encouraged city councilperson or somebody to get ahold of them and see what the situation is because that hasn't been resolved over there. Wes Moore recently said that if you're not intentional about equity, it's not going to get done. And so we need to do what we can do intentionally. And so I want to put that on your mind so that you understand that we need to address some issues and we need intentional actions to be prevalent. Also, Tyree Nichols is on my mind, Memphis. His family brought a $550 million suit against the city, not for the money, but because they recognize that we have something wrong in a community, in a nation where 66% of our police forces haven't even looked with or updated their police use of force records. We need to take a look. I've been asking for this for about five years now, and I've gotten a good, good response, whether that's been accomplished. Also, we ought to be considering diversity on our police forces, a citizen police review board, a non-policed response to crisis situations, and a use of 988 so that people can get help they need. Over 90% of calls nationwide don't, don't need a guy with a gun. So why are we pouring more money, more money into programs that don't help with these situations? I, I need response from police. We all do. But it needs to be appropriate response and where it's necessary. And so I want to give those to you for consideration. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. My name is Patrick Furman, 19 West 35th Street, Academy District. I stand before you this evening as the little guy, the common residential homeowner within city limits that is trying to live the American dream, getting married, pursuing a home, purchasing a home, raising a family, and now looking forward to retirement. Looking forward to retirement with a happy face and good fortunes. I'm a simple man wanting nothing more than to be left alone to live a peaceful and comfortable life in a residential neighborhood. The American dream is defined by the idea in which equality and opportunity are given to any American. The idea, any American, allowing the highest aspirations and goals to be achieved. As a longtime Erie resident, I certainly feel that I've achieved the basic fundamentals of this creed. But unfortunately, my commercial neighbor, Lilly Broadcasting, for which I serve a city, which I share a city alley with called Mitchell Drive, is refusing this little guy of the American dream of equal opportunity and refuting any aspirations of living comfortably within city limits. The reason I am, the reasoning for me addressing council this evening is to kindly ask for your help in a never-ending assault on my property perpetrated by Lilly Broadcasting during the winter months. Undoubtedly, Lilly Broadcasting is the Goliath in this saga, a very well-connected organization, not only commercially, but politically as well. And it is my disabled wife and I that are the David in the story of the little guy battling the influential giant. But I hope with council's help, I can finally put at rest Lilly Broadcasting's malicious attacks on my property for their own personal gain. For 15 years now, I have repeatedly and with sincerity asked Lilly Broadcasting for reframing and plowing Mitchell Drive. Their actions of plowing city property and deliberately pushing snow onto my property, blocking access to my garage and denying a place for my disabled wife to park the car has gone unresponsive. Every year, Lilly Broadcasting has ignored my request and has continuously denied my disabled wife a comfortable place to park the vehicle. For five years now, we have stopped parking our car in the garage because of Lilly Broadcasting's ignorance towards my family and I. And yes, this battle does continue. With Lilly Broadcasting continuously dismissing the request and not plowing public property, I thought I would reach out to the actual snowplow company in hopes of having them understand city ordinances in relationship to plowing city property. And I believe I felt I was successful. Until the snowfall of March 7th, 2023, an unidentified plow truck, not related to the plowing contractor, in the early morning hours of March 7th and at the direction of Lilly Broadcasting, once again attacked my property. But this time, the plow truck physically and with malcontent pushed stone and debris from the alley onto my property down Mitchell Drive, leaving it in the driveway across the street. Later that morning, city plow trucks pushed the stone-filled pile scattering onto my neighbor's yard. There is no doubt that an influential person at Lilly Broadcasting made a phone call to the right person orchestrating the plowing to Mitchell Drive on March 7th. I can only assume directing the individual to damage my property, deliberately sending me a message that a simple home, that a simple call to the right person can get things done when willing influential power commercially or politically. In closing, I'm asking city council to please look into this never-ending assault on my property by Lilly Broadcasting. Because after 15 years of being stepped on by Lilly Broadcasting, my wife and I are tired of battling with this unsympathetic and erudite-driven organization and are at the point where we want to simply be left alone to finish out with the remaining of living the life of the American dream in the City of Erie. Thank you.
Mr. President, that address, can we get that address again, please?
Sir, did you put your address when you signed in? It's recorded.
I apologize.
No, you said it. I just wanted to make, he wanted to make sure he got it.
Your address?
19 West 35th Street.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Between 2019 and 2022, our police budget increased by $9 million. By, 820 Cranberry Street. $9 million police budget increased. Three years, crime's up.
820 Cranberry, Molly Brechtel. For $9 million, we have mixed results on violent crime. Aggravated assault, homicide, and robbery. For $9 million, we could have lifted half of Erie's families out of poverty. It's time to start investing in root causes of violence. The Centers for Disease Control states that our extreme poverty rate means that our kids are at 4.5 times the risk of being shot. We need to fund a UBI pilot immediately and act like our child poverty rate is the crisis that it is. We demand that the administration allocate the $2.1 million youth investment fund to lift 300 families at a minimum in this city out of poverty. The money's there, the plan's there. The only thing stopping this is political will. Let's talk about saving lives. Let's talk about preventing crime. And let's be serious about our kids. Love is an action word. Does Jamestown, New York, Philadelphia, dozens upon dozens upon dozens of cities love their kids more than we do here in Erie that have passed UBI pilots by the inaction? I'll let everyone be the judge.
Ann McCarthy, 6101 East Lake Road in Harbor Creek. Good evening and thank you. I want to, I coordinate Benedictines for Peace, and we want to speak in support of the pilot for the UBI. We have learned through experience and through study, particularly in the Erie Racial Justice and Policy Initiative, which we participate in, that policy matters, that having measurable, achievable goals, using best practices, and addressing root causes is the way to create change. And we really need change in Erie. The childhood poverty rate has, has, has worsened despite everything that we have done. At our ministries, we see the effects of child poverty. Ministries alone cannot, can, can help, but they cannot raise children out of poverty. And that's what's absolutely needed. This pilot is doable. It's a best practice. It's done other places. We have the money. Let's try it. It could be a real solution. Every child that is caught in poverty, whose life is impacted and opportunities limited, is a tragedy. And the longer we wait, we've waited long enough, the longer we wait, the more of a tragedy. I also want to speak to Earth Day. Just three quick points. Thank you for the Environmental Advisory Committee. It's especially important. I'd ask you to use it well. Use it before every decision. Use it to ask questions. Use it to find the best practices. I'd ask you, I sent you all information about the most recent fires at a plastics processing, quote, recycling plant. I'd ask you to ask more questions about IRG. What support are they getting from the city? But also what questions are being asked? I, um, at, in, at any point that we can. And before every decision, I'd ask you to think about the water. Think about the air. Think about the soil. And especially think about our children. Thank you.
Good evening, city council, mayor. My name is Savannah Wilson. I live on 2820 Cranberry Street. I'm here to address the poverty crisis that is running rampant in the streets of Erie, along with the mental health crisis that is also living inside of childrens and adults who are struggling, living in poverty. The other day, I saw a woman standing on the corner with a sign that read, "Hungry, Anything Helps", or like the police like to refer to them as, aggressive panhandlers. I stopped in the store and bought chips, M&amp;M's, milk, cereal, and a candy bar. I also got $20 cash back. The sky was black and it was about to start storming, so I offered her a ride to her next destination. On the car ride, I asked her questions. "How did you get up in Erie? Did you grow up here?" She said, "No. I came up here with a boyfriend, but he took everything from me and then left me with nothing. Panhandling is the only thing that's helped me get somewhat on my feet. It's helped me get a small place. I'm still working very hard to get a job." She then mentioned how grateful she was for a friend that's letting her stay at her place. Her friend is suffering from schizophrenia and is also living in severe poverty. When I pulled up to her destination, got out to help her with her groceries, I walked to her house, and when she knocked on the door, her husband answered. The first thing that she said was, "Babe, look, we got cereal." She bought us cereal. Not the $20 I gave her, not the ride I offered her. The raisin-brained cereal and the milk that I bought her brought her more joy than anything. When the door closed, my eyes were filled with tears because I could not believe how ungrateful and how rude I was earlier in the day for bitching and moaning about going to work when there was a person on the corner waiting for somebody to give her milk and cereal. Back in February, when I invited you all to the Black History Month event at ECAT, a few neighborhood children stopped in, and I asked them a very grown-up question. I asked them, "What would you do if you had extra cash right now?" Of course, some of them wrote toys and games, but the oldest out of the siblings wrote, "I would buy my mom a house and I would put food in our refrigerator." I didn't know how to respond to that, and I think about that every day. In my recent visit at Erie High, our kids have no hopes in their faces, desensitized to the violence and the police that do absolutely nothing to prevent it. I can't fathom the thought that more police are going to do anything for our poverty crisis and our mental health crisis that's destroying our city. It's hard for me to think of those moments every day, and it's even more unbearable for me to think of a plan of a juvenile probation center being put in neighborhoods where people are living in poverty and struggling with mental health. But I guess that's the only solution, to put more police. Like they don't have a history of being racist that has messed up our nations, our societies, and the lives of Black and Brown people and other oppressed people in our nation. We all say we're fighting for the same cause, but our plans are all very different. Do you think the investment fund shouldn't be used for our youth? But instead, to fund the police playing basketball with these kids just for in a couple of years, be taken to court and spent millions of dollars on lawsuits? Fund our youth by funding a universal basic income pilot? Fund our city, which is dying in the hands of your decisions? Stop the violence? Educate our police on the racist history, the brutal attacks that have been inflicted into our nations, into our society, and all of the lives of Black and Brown oppressed people across America? 44% of our children are living in poverty, 17% in our county. Being free is our birthright. These kids are not bad kids. They're sad kids. They need protection, they need guidance, and they need somebody to look up to them. Who is going to save them? Because nobody saved me. Nobody. And now my little sister that goes to SV is struggling with her mental health and at school because no, nothing is getting done. Nothing. This is a problem, and it's going to continue to be a problem until we all come together and think of the solutions. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be?
I don't know what to say. What I'm here for seems very frivolous, frivolous after, frivolous after hearing these women, but nonetheless. Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I do hope, though, that this is the last time I will be standing here before you, imploring you to make a favorable decision for the City of Erie in regards to short-term rentals. My sisters and I feel strong, so strongly about this issue that for almost six years, yes, six years.
Ms. Morris, can you give, can you give your name and address for the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we all know.
Lucinda Maurer, 5833 Mill Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16509. Now I lost my place. My sisters and I feel so strongly about this issue that for almost six years, yes, again, six years, we have not given up on trying to get this ordinance passed. We have presented you with concrete facts and documentation over and over again why short-term rentals are beneficial to our community and how they have a huge impact on those that rent them and those that operate them. Mr. Brzezinski, you brought up the concern of how would short-term rentals be regulated. I would think the simple answer to that question would be the same way you regulate long-term rentals. Short-term rentals are not much different than a long-term rental, except that they are maintained and taken care of far better than a long-term rental, such as the two. are maintained and taken care of far better than a long-term rental, such as the two short-term rentals in your neighborhood, Mr. Brzezinski, ours being one of them. Our rental fee is paid on time every year to the city of Erie, and we meet all safety requirements as deemed by the city inspector. This issue has gone on long enough and really needs to be settled once and for all. I do hope, as city council members representing all of the city of Erie, you will vote in favor of this ordinance tonight so we can showcase our city to all who have come here and give them the opportunity to stay in a short-term rental if that is their choice. I thank you for your time, and I feel pretty safe to say that you will be okay with not seeing the three sisters anytime soon. Thank you. And I really do have empathy for this city and the problem that's going on with poverty and the children.
My name is Kathy Whipple. I live at 6072 Hummingbird Court, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16509. What I have to say is probably pretty repetitive to what my sister said. There really is not much left to say about short-term rentals, Airbnbs, or VRBOs, however you choose to refer to them. And all of you on City Council know that this issue has been ongoing for almost six years. During that time, we have, as in my sisters and I, have presented facts supporting the concept of short-term rentals and the benefits to the city of Erie. During the almost six years, the home on Upland Drive, which seems to be the epicenter of this issue, has had over 800 visitors. During that time, not one time have the police been called. There have been no loud parties, no increase in traffic, no drug issues, and no decrease in the property value, which seemed to be a concern for most people. What is, what has done, what we have done is promote the city of Erie and its businesses, press style, and the vast variety of activities that there are to do in Erie. As City Council member Susanna Faulkner stated, "It's time to vote, pass this ordinance, and get it on the books." This can only benefit the city of Erie, which in the end is what everyone wants. I thank you for your time and your patience over the last six years.
My name is Theodore Ely. I live at 4524 Cherry Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. I am here to speak about the ordinance that you intend to put on the agenda, or you did put on the agenda, for short-term rentals. I see a lot of flaws in this, in this law. You have to excuse me. I am currently recovering from an eye operation, and I can't see that well, so I will probably have some moments to pause. Sorry about that. Anyways, the, first of all, one is that there is no provision in there for public safety. As far as I'm concerned, if you want to be an Airbnb, you should have an inspection done prior to your being licensed, and you should have to pass that inspection. We've all seen what the consequences can be of entities that do not have, have not been inspected, and to wit the daycare fatality where five children were burned to death. In addition, there is no provision for additional individuals to regulate these programs, or excuse me, these Airbnbs, short-term rentals. The problem with that is basically that you don't have people to make the inspection, you don't have people to do, deal with the licensing, and other problems stemming from Airbnbs. You also do not have a provision in there which would allow for Airbnbs to be governed or to be owned only by those who occupied the residence themselves. We've had problems with that in our neighborhood and with Airbnbs that are not occupied by the owner, in spite of what's been said to you. And that should be a part of the ordinance. There also should be a provision which would not allow corporations to own these Airbnbs. There have been many articles printed about this, that corporations will come, build an Airbnb, and then have only a low-paid rental agent that occupies the property or is anywhere near the property. Right now, the only, the statute only requires that there be a representative. It should be the owner who's there, who's occupying the property. Also, there is no saving in here of people who would be kicked out of their residence by Airbnbs. That's a common problem with when Airbnbs come in, especially with minority neighborhoods, people who rent, that the landlord kicks the tenants out and goes to an Airbnb because it's much more profitable. This is unfair. It's unfair to renters, and most of them would be people who would be disenfranchised anyways, who are poor and cannot seek representation. As I said, we've had problems with renters in our neighborhood. We've had wild and raucous parties. We've had people who have multiple cars, trailers, where we had to call the police to get them to take these vehicles off the street. I know that there's a provision in there for it, however... (bell dings) I'm sorry. Okay. However, I would ask that you consider taking this off the ballot, and I would like to see it as a referendum where all of the people of the city can vote on this and have their voices heard.
Good evening. My name is Beatrice Torres, and I reside in 4152 Pine Avenue here in the city of Erie. So, good evening, City Council members and mayor. I'm coming from Mercyhurst University. I'm an associate professor and chair of the Department of Public Health, and the reason I'm here tonight is because I brought six out of 30 of my students from a class that is called Social Determinants of Health. And if you're not familiar with it, our class focuses on all this social, economic, political, environmental, et cetera, factors that really shape the life of individuals in tremendous ways. So, my students during the course of our class have actually, all 30 students have walked the talk, and they have actually walked through the city of Erie, through different neighborhoods. And I brought six of those students today to share with you some of their observations. They also talked to different neighbors and members of different organizations, and in doing so, they wanted to know exactly what are some factors that really are encouraging good health and well-being, and what other factors are detracting individuals from actually achieving that well-being and health that we're expecting everybody to be able to have. So, I am hoping that while you are listening to what the students are sharing with you, that you will be able to understand also how the work that you do is so fundamental in trying to actually also tackle some of these issues. Invest in the things that, as my previous speakers talk about, invest on other things that are perhaps more important. And also, I wanted you to have that perception, this is a concept that we use in public health that is very important. Please, every time you create a policy, an ordinance, pay attention to how that ordinance is going to affect the health of individuals, because indirectly, every single thing that you do, the things that you support or don't support, may affect the health of individuals. So, I'm here with Kayla, Michael, Maggie, Sarah, Nolani, and Jonathan, and so I'm just going to thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, we'll be glad to share what we know. Thank you.
My name is Kayla Gill, 501 East 38th Street. So, for my particular area of the neighborhoods, I was from Wallace down until Holland Street, so German, Cedar, Pine Parade. And my, our initial observations right off the bat was just how unwelcoming it felt. All you would see really on these houses were no trespassing, beware of dogs, you know, stay out signs, not very welcoming, not a community that, you know, you want to come to, to meet people and to engage in conversations. A lot of the houses looked very rough, worn down, you know, they've been, lived in, they've been through everything, you know, the elements of the weather and just the years of wear and tear that houses get, but just nothing done to upkeep these houses. The house infrastructure and even the landscaping of everything. There's garbage and broken glass, alcohol litter, things like cans and bottles, you know, that definitely is a prominent problem that we have here in Erie, as we do know that. A lot of the houses have tarps covering windows, roofs, porches. They have boards up to keep heat in their houses, you know, one can only assume. There's graffiti on buildings, whether they're houses or even just stores and other buildings that were in the neighborhoods. While we were down there, there's constant sirens, police, firefighters, ambulances, you know, there's, it's just never, it was never really quiet while we were down there. You know, there was always something happening, and even walking through, I mean, we were only down there for about two and a half hours over the course of two days, and we had seen multiple incidents of fights on the street on our first day. We even witnessed a woman being pushed out of a moving vehicle on the very first day towards the end of our visit down there. And I think that that definitely set the tone for kind of what we were in for, for the rest of our trips down there. So, I'm going to talk mostly about our food options, and then I'll pass it over. There's about a corner store on every corner, but you do not see a single grocery store. And when talking to a lot of the neighbors that, you know, we interacted with, that we approached, that was the number one thing they wanted to see change. And going into a lot of the convenience stores, corner stores, all you see are processed foods, whether it's chips, candy, fruit that's in cups, you know, nothing fresh, nothing healthy at all. A lot of the options were over-processed, and even the options that they did have, like bread and milk, are either sold out or three times the price because they can charge really whatever they please. That was probably one of the biggest, one of the main pieces of feedback we got back from a lot of the neighborhood, the neighborhood. They wanted a grocery store. They want things such as meat and even fresh fruit, milk that's affordable, eggs, just things that they can grab, bring home, and serve to their families, really. When talking to one of the neighbors, they worked in the Rite Aid, and they said that people were constantly coming in asking for fresh fruit or meat or anything, and their number one sole product was frozen foods or prepackaged things and never anything really fresh. When going into the convenience stores, there's a lot of, I mean, for me, I go to school here, I'm from New York. What I don't ever see is, they look like gambling machines, I'm not really sure what they are, you know, specifically, but we just thought that that was something that was really interesting to see in a neighborhood that was struggling so much. And that was another topic that was brought up with the neighbors that we talked to, and one of them specifically said they put these here to take the rest of the money from the poor. And when you go in there, you see people sitting there, and it's, it's just a crazy sight to walk in on, you know, when you go to a convenience store, you think that you're stopping in really quick to grab something. And finally, in these convenience stores, we felt like there was more gadgets and more things promoting smoking and whether it's tobacco or marijuana than we did see food. There was a whole section of pipes and bongs and lighters and ashtrays, and then you turn to the side and you see a little table of Little Debbie's or things like that. So, that was, that is my, those are our initial observations, and I'll pass it off to the rest of my group. Thank you.
What area were you in again? What area? Chief Graco?
What area were you in? One more time.
It was from, I was Parade, Wallace, German, Cedar, Vine, I think that was it.
Oh, 4th and...
Yeah, it was, and then it was...
38th Street?
Six to Eighth, yep.
Sixteenth?
Six and Eighth, yep.
My name is Michael Davis. I live in 501 East 38th Street. I'm a junior at Mercyhurst University, and I also play college football. To tie in with what my partner Kayla said, was the housing situation within Erie in the inner city where we all walked and toured across and observed, just isn't in the best shape possible. It's no way, shape, or form acceptable. The living conditions that these people are living under, the trash, the mattresses just laying in yards, people, some people don't even have driveways, and they're just, they're parked in their yard. There's broken glass, there's toilets, there's, there's stuff that the city can come and pick up. And it's, it's just, it's, it's not okay. Also, I'd like to talk about how most of the houses that we walked by were also broken down. It looked like they hadn't been renovated in years. Also, downtown as well, there's also a lack of parking as well, which can also cause some sort of a hazard as well. And going from that point, it's, it's just not a safe city to raise children around, especially where we walked across during, around Parade, German Street, everywhere like that, it's, it's just not the place you want to raise a child at. And it's very unfortunate that some people who are below the poverty line have to raise their children in that area. When speaking to some of the neighbors that lived around these areas, they said that the most valuable thing to them, that they would want from the community, is a safe playground, a playground for children to play in, which is open for the entire community. As we were walking through this area where we were observing, there were no places to, for children to play. There were open lots, abandoned houses. There, the only... The only playground that we saw was a daycare, and it was fenced in. Also, another issue that we saw and observed was most of the, most of the bus stops in the area, there weren't shelters. So, there's no, it's not roofed in, there's just a seat. And I know a lot of homeless people, they use these bus stops to either sleep or get around and through transportation and travel. With that being said, through these cold winter months and rainy months, they are at risk of getting sick and ultimately getting wet. As well, what hinders healthy life in Erie is the lack of resources that I just talked about, the poor living conditions, as well as the lack of unemployment, I mean, I'm sorry, the lack of, the lack of employment, and the high rate of crime. With that being said, when we were walking around closer near Erie Insurance, the Erie Insurance Security was driving around some of the neighborhoods, which was somewhat, I really appreciated that because even though that, that's not there, they're not supposed to, like, I don't know what I'm trying to say, I'm sorry. But basically, the Erie Insurance does drive around some of these public areas, and they could be used as a form of protection for some of these neighborhoods as well, other than the police, because I know the police gets pretty busy around here. And yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Wide receiver? What position? Tight end.
Hi, my name's Maggie Newton, and I'm a sophomore at Mercyhurst. I'm on the women's lacrosse team, too. So, our presentation is a little bit different than theirs. There were actually six groups, and there were two days where we went down and did our community assessment. So, all other of the five groups had neighborhoods, and when we presented in class, everyone was talking about how the housing was terrible, the cleanliness of the neighborhoods was terrible, they felt unsafe, they saw ambulance, fire trucks, police, people getting pushed out of cars, violence. But our experience was a little bit different. Our location was East Tenth Street, Holland Street, East Fourth Street, and French Street. So, our location had Erie Insurance and the Sea Wolf Stadium. Our location had very little housing, no grocery stores, it was pretty clean, well-maintained, very nice sidewalks, streets, and streetlights. So, it was very well-lit and just was very different compared to the other groups. We did see some safety hazards, there is a bank being built. I don't know exactly which street it was on, it was on... Yes, yeah. And that is right next door to a children's museum, I think it was like a children's play, place to go. So, we think that was very dangerous, we've just talked about that as a group. And then we also noticed that they're trying to grow grass outside of Erie Insurance and the Sea Wolf Stadium, and there's like netting down for the grass to be built, and there's trash literally all over it, there's no grass going to be built whatsoever. So, we think like a policy that could be in place, from our experiences and other people in our class, that trash cans should be put around to help with the trash issue. People just throw trash on people's lawn, walking down the street, but if there's a trash can right there, people will put their trash in that. So, that's just a policy that we came up with as a group. And one of our interviews, we got to interview Mary Williams from St. Patrick Church, which was a great experience. She was very resourceful and informative, she actually runs the food pantry, so she gave us a lot of information about that. But one thing she said that she wished she could change was getting help from the city of Erie on providing more necessities, like they can't deliver deodorant or shampoo, conditioner, toilet paper, all they can do is groceries, and she said that would help the people so much. So, that's something that was awesome.
Good evening. My name is John Boland. I'm a junior at Mercyhurst, I'm also a criminal justice major. Like she said, compared to other groups, our project involved Erie Insurance. And I was, first thing to say is I'm very much corrected. I had opinions about Erie Insurance before I went there and talked to everybody and really got a good understanding of what they're doing in the community. Through our chart and through our streets, we found that everything was a lot more modernized. There was, and that Erie Insurance was great neighbors towards other businesses next door. And that they also end up buying properties that are typically unoccupied or abandoned, and they'll tear them down, make little green spaces, and we'll learn from, one of my other classmates, that these green spaces are very much appreciated by a lot of people surrounding that area. Also, that we noticed that there was a lot of emergency posts, the big blue posts with the light and everything, we found that when it comes to safety, very, very nice for anybody on the street, not just for Erie Insurance, but anybody walking up and down the street, going to work, coming home from work late at night, that those posts are there for them to use. So, one of our interviews, I talked to, or we talked to, a security guard at Erie Insurance. Being a criminal justice major, I had to try to restrain myself from criminal justice on this project and kind of really tailor it around public health. When talking to this security guard, we asked him about what are like the most important assets at his community that he could see around. He said that the new employees coming around for Erie Insurance, the jobs that they provide, I know Erie Insurance with like daughters' games, it doesn't just promote business and financial jobs, they also promote concession jobs, cleaning jobs, all those different jobs that employees can get hired on with little schooling as well. And he also said the most important thing is tourists, having new people come in, spend a little money in Erie, have them come to Erie and show them Erie. Some of the biggest problems or issues that he saw with the community is safety of employees. With this many employees coming in, different tourists coming in late at night for games and different events, keeping the safety of their employees and tourists was an issue that he saw. Continuing on constant construction, construction around the buildings always kind of reveal a problem with parking and different issues with them trying to get to work, being able to park their car. And then, as well, oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sarah Marin. I'm also a senior at Mercyhurst, and I'm part of the women's water polo team. So, one of the things that we realized while walking around our area are just the amount of unoccupied businesses that there are, especially on French Street. This is a clean area, they're good building structures, and we thought that to make downtown more accessible and safe for families and children, to be able to walk around and enjoy the attractions it offers, we could help fund small businesses and implementing their coffee shops, boutiques, gyms, libraries, local shops. This can also help Erie become self-sufficient. And a way that Erie Insurance is already helping with this is that they help the city become more attractive and have walkable pathways. We noticed it in the crosswalks when we're walking, the crosswalks were accessible for people with disabilities. And a really big difference we noticed were the streetlights, the ones located by Erie Insurance were just like more powerful and brighter, and that obviously gave more safety for the people walking around it. So, overall, we think that should be implemented in the rest of Erie to provide more safety for its neighbors. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nolani La Santa. I go to Mercyhurst University. I study public health with a minor in public policy and human resource management. So, let me just set this here. Today, I'm also gonna talk about my part of the assessment, which was the interview at Housing Authority, which Housing Authority mostly talked, which is mostly serves housing for low-income, fifteen thousand to thirty thousand dollars a year. And I had the opportunity to speak to them, and basically, they were talking about, I had the opportunity to work there because I did home healthcare, so I got to experience how it is in the inside of the business. And thankfully, the food service does help out, so that is a plus, that they help out every Tuesday. But they did share that they enjoyed the green spaces, and also how Erie Insurance, they felt connected and safe within the community because Erie Insurance, because Erie Insurance is right around there, so they can easily stop by, and the safety lights also helps as well. But I wanted to shed light on an issue that I feel like is important. So, I go to Mercyhurst University, and because the CHAFI law, I have the opportunity to have a free ride to college. And I grew up in the foster system, sorry. Sorry, I'm wasting time. And I didn't have a good upbringing, and I feel like, sorry, I'm not supposed to cry. I didn't have a good upbringing, and I feel like that was a very good opportunity, and I feel like we should shed light on how to implement, basically, for, yes, we have now that the foster youth get to attend college, but what happens to the youth that don't have any support systems because I chose to do better for myself, sorry. I chose to do better for myself, and then I got isolated from my family, and I spent three years in placement, which is pretty much, is pretty much when you're in the system and you don't have nowhere to put them, so they put me in there. And I got out at seventeen years old, and I was expected to do nothing and be a failure. So, I did have the opportunity, the Sisters of St. Joseph's, that leaded me in the direction and gave me the opportunity, and Susanna Foster, Foxer, has been wonderful, and I reached back to the Sisters of St. Joseph and realized that they were the reason why I succeeded and had that positive outlook. And I just wanted to shed light that there is people that are going and using that money, but now, because it's fairly new in 2020, and I have had wonderful, wonderful professors like Dr. Torres, that's been very understanding, especially, I'm lucky because I study public health, which is understanding the social determinants of health and how it affects the community. So, I am appreciative of that, but now, I think the next level is how are the students that are in the foster system going to succeed? And the statistics to that is fifty-fifty, fifty percent in the foster youth graduate high school, and only four percent make it through college, the four-year degree, because they don't have support systems. So, I would say that my experience is held with a dash of sunshine. So, I just wanted to shed light on that issue, and going back to the interview, and the community, and tied down to the drop-offs and the food banks, and then we're gonna top it off to him ending the conclusion, but I just wanted to make that an address issue that is fairly new, and I am going through the process of the opportunity of the CHAFI scholarship.
In conclusion, through our group and other groups, and listening to each presentation through class, something that we realized that our section of the city is a lot different than what we see from our other groups, with Erie Insurance adding so many implements, like the sidewalks, the street lamps, half the street lamps have cameras down. And being a criminal justice major, when I walked through the city, I looked at it as these lights being bright, these cameras being out, like all that kind of stuff is a lot of deterrence from crime, and that we learned through the interview with the security guard that all of this deterrence happening in the city is a good thing on fighting crime, as well as, like the other group stated about public health issues within the store markets, on promoting more of the tobacco products and other things like that, and unhealthy food that are typically more expensive than the fresh produce that can be put inside of these stores. We believe that if there's a policy that can regulate what are these stores selling and how much they are selling, what they are promoting, could help a lot of our health in Erie, as well as not just relying on Erie Insurance to be a big part of the community, and to be able to move these kind of streetlights and sidewalks and all this other kind of implements that they're putting in their side of town over to other blocks and kind of spread that around. And we believe that this would help a lot in Erie. Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Torres, for bringing us here tonight, and we appreciate it, thank you.
How much time do we get?
Five minutes.
Could I request an additional two? I have a lot to, I don't know if there's anyone after me, I know there's been a lot of speakers, but...
It's a five-minute limit, we have, we've had other residents cut off
Sure.
through the course of the night.
All right, I'll do my best. Good evening, Council, my name is Andrew Blackburn, my address is on the sheet. I've been a real estate agent since 2016. I'm here tonight to comment on the proposed ordinance that would allow short-term rentals to operate legally in the city. As a Realtor with clients looking to buy Airbnbs, I have a responsibility to find homes for them so they can meet their goals of making an income on their investments. It's a pretty good deal for me to work with STR investors because they tend to be repeat buyers, so I work with them to expand their portfolios. But I also have a responsibility to the residents, neighbors, and families that I work with that are looking for a place to call home. I have seen the goal of homeownership slipping through the grasp of the people that live and work here. Even finding a rental in the city has become more and more difficult, and this issue ties directly to the rise of short-term rentals. I wanted more info on Airbnbs, so I went looking online for homes available to rent in our area during the weekend of January 5th. I chose a slow winter weekend to find as many results as I could because the true number of Airbnbs is unknown and unlisted. As of yesterday, there are three hundred and eighty-seven Airbnbs and one hundred and eighty-five VRBOs available for January 5th. Over six hundred STRs available, but what about hotel options? Twenty-twelve Erie Times News article quoted the number of hotel rooms in Erie County at forty-three hundred, which doesn't include all the new bayfront hotels. Local occupancy rates average fifty-two percent annually, though that number is obviously higher in the summer. Still, the facts show that there is no shortage of accommodations for the tourists that visit our town. In fact, during our frigid winters, we could house every single homeless person in Erie County several times over with the surplus of empty heated hotel rooms. But when it comes to places to live, places to call home, there's a lot less options. There's fifty-four residential properties available for sale in the city, takeaway condos, and there are forty-nine. In all of northeast Erie, five. In northwest Erie, there are seven. All Erieites need a place to live that is attainable with local wages. All of us are playing a high-stakes game of musical chairs, and there are forty-nine chairs for ninety-four thousand people. That works out to one house for sale for one thousand nine hundred and eighteen residents. This week, Realtor.com reported that homes in Erie are selling faster than anywhere in the United States. In 2014, we had over two thousand total listings, now we have one hundred and sixty-two chairs left. This shortfall directly affects prices. When a real estate agent gives you an opinion on the value of your home, we take the condition and location of a home and compare it to the local real estate market. But a business approaches valuation differently. Someone running a short-term rental business should consider a property based on profit potential rather than the residential value. Put another way, a home used as an Airbnb becomes more valuable immediately and commands a higher price when it is sold, which drives up prices for everyone. When Erieites attempt to buy a home, they are competing with investors of all kinds. Many of these investors live, pay taxes, and spend their money out of town. Now that short-term rentals have proven to be money-printing machines, large corporations have been buying up single-family homes all over the country, including here in Pennsylvania, where twelve percent of the homes sold in 2021 were sold to corporations, and that number is much higher in black and brown communities. There are homes in the city in January that rent for up to five hundred dollars a night, that's a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars per year. When an asset can make its When an asset can make its entire purchase cost back in just a couple of years, investors take notice and the price of those assets starts to soar. I want to stress that our current city government did not create this mess, but all housing issues result from policy choices. STRs can coexist with permanent housing if they are done right. I understand tourism helps Erie economy and I know that Erie is a fun town to visit. But as someone who earned a BS in Parks and Tourism Management from Penn State, I can tell you something I learned there, which is that the tourism industry rarely works out well for local population. You can look at any area that is packed with resorts and look at the wealth that is within those resorts and compare it to the abject poverty that consumes the local population works for the resorts. If workers don't benefit from tourist dollars and citizens have to fork over tax dollars to get hotels built, who actually benefits from tourism? The city gets some crumbs, but mainly, it's the corporations and investors that profit and some benefit to an extreme degree. There's actually a local business group that uses a one-hundred-foot party yacht as a short-term rental, available for the low, low price of forty-nine thousand dollars per week, plus incidents. These wealthy yacht owners always have their hands out when it comes to state money and tax discounts, yet pay their employees peanuts as they take tax dollars from our pockets. We are getting squeezed out of our only homes while they enjoy their floating vacation homes, complete with an onboard staff, jet skis, and twenty-seven-foot ferry boats. Their boats have boats. You can charter this, I said that. In conclusion, homeownership is still the number-one, one-way, average Americans grow their wealth, but if they become priced out, their wealth will go straight to those who already have so much. If you pass this ordinance as written, you will exacerbate every housing issue from neighborhood cohesion to homelessness, and you will have cosigned your names as endorsing the largest transfer of wealth from the hands of your constituents to wealthy laissez-faire landlords from high-income zip codes, or worse, even the wealthy folks could be crowded out from their neighborhoods by multinational corporations that are only interested in siphoning money away from Erie to some foreign tax haven. Make sure you get all the info you need, because once this ordinance passes, there's no going back. Thank you.
What's that? Hey, did you put a card in with these or anything like that? No.
No, my, my phone and address is on there.
Okay.
I didn't want to be, I didn't want to turn it into a business thing.
No, no, no. You got a nice list of the ideas to support and we're probably working on about half of those in conversation right now.
Okay, great.
So, just to give ahead.
Yeah, there's a lot that can be done.
I'll grab your phone number if we could get coffee sometime.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? All right.
Hi, Tom Sebald, forty-six, thirty-eight, Highview Boulevard, Erie, PA. Of the emails, so, I, I don't know, I feel silly being here talking about what I'm going to talk about after listening to the great presentation from Professor Torres and your guys' talks, but it is what it is. This is when you're voting on it, so here I go. You know, it's clear that the will of council is to pass something to regulate short-term rentals, and that's correct. They need to be regulated, but they need to be regulated correctly. It's really up to you and coming upon you to pass something of value that can actually achieve the stated goal of the draft language, and specifically, the preamble where it says, whereas the city desires to specifically define and regulate such uses for the benefit and protection of both the property owner and the residents and visitors in the neighborhood. I don't think the current draft does that. It's mostly a rehash of a previous draft that the majority of you decided wasn't good a year and a half ago. But now, now we seem to think otherwise. I think the two main reasons, and I've said this a lot in those emails that I've sent you, the two main reasons that STR ordinance fail in other municipalities is that they don't deal with two issues. One is density, and then one is enforcement or compliance. In terms of density, too many concentrated in a neighborhood basically alter the character of that neighborhood because it introduces a hospitality, business activity into a residential neighborhood. To sort of show that, you know, if we take Mr. Witherspoon and you look to your right, you have Mr. Nelson, right? You're a house. He's a house that's a short-term rental. He allows eight people to stay at him on a regular basis. The county clerk is a house. She allows eight people to stay at her place on a regular basis. That chair is another house. They allow six people to stay there. And then, way over here, maybe eight or ten houses away, we'll call it Mr. Brzezinski, you're a house, you let eight people in as well. That's, that's a real-time example of what's going on on Lakeside Drive right now in a neighborhood you had talked about before, Mr. Nelson. If you considered your dais there, or not your dais, but your desks, Lakeside Drive, those are the houses that are surrounding what would be Mr. Witherspoon. So, in a, in a five-house adjoining area, you've got three Airbnbs that, that house twenty-two people, potentially twenty-two people. That's basically a small hotel, correct? So, density to me is the key to making one of these ordinances work for the long term. It's the primary issue why other, other municipalities have had to revisit it and add in the density requirements. You guys did put me on the zoning hearing board. I appreciate that. But I don't have the tools on there to enforce something like that because it's not in the current, in the current ordinance that you guys are proposing. So, there's no way to address a density issue. In terms of compliance, I sent an email earlier today, so I'm going to rehash a lot of that. You can tell me to shut up, but I'm not gonna. So, it's really just weak what's proposed so far. In terms of, in four main things, in terms of the proposed licensing fee, there really isn't one. The one for long-term rentals is, it's, it's an inspection fee. It's every year, but it's pretty minimal. I think you need a licensing fee that will cover, cover the additional costs that these are going to have in terms of regulation. The fine amount, right now, the fine amount is five hundred bucks a month for somebody operating either without a license or violating the ordinance. That's nothing to these guys. The Mr. Nelson house there rents out for four hundred bucks a night, so they can cover a fine pretty easily and keep running, and that's what they're going to do. And then, insurance, I know that you had extended that up to about a hundred and fifty grand. That's still pretty inadequate and it's not even consistent with what the booking agencies offer free of charge through their services. So, I think I would up that, you know, to the, at least a half a million dollar minimum. It's not that much and they could probably tell you, run in theirs. I guarantee you, they have a million or more in an umbrella policy. You protect your assets and these people, most of them are going to be doing it except the bad actors. So, it needs to be a high, higher bar there. So, I think at the end of the day, I'm going to sum it up. I, I think mostly I'd rather be talking about the Lower East Side with these people than I would about this rich person problem. But I, I would say the difference between doing a job and doing a job well is what, what I would like you guys to really take under consideration. You could fix it. You have the resources. Please do that. Thanks.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens? Any other citizens to be heard? Ordinance or final passage?
Ordinance number sixteen, three, forty. Official ordinance fifteen, twenty, twenty-three. An ordinance amending Articles Two, Three, and Six of the City of Erie zoning ordinance to incorporate language for short-term rentals. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Torres. That council file ordinance, Bill number sixteen, three, forty, and now known as official file ordinance fifteen, twenty, twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski?
One moment. I, this is going to pass, but I take Mr. Sebald's comments very, very seriously and I will vote for it because there's no reason to be six and one. But I, I'm really concerned about how we're going to police this. As a real estate, former real estate broker, I know this is a good thing, but not doing the right way, not going about the right way to make sure it's done the right way. And passing this, just to say we have something passed is something that I've been fighting for two years. We got a little closer this time, Mr. Nelson, and I applaud you for that. But we still, five hundred thousand is the minimum that should be on that report. I don't know if a table would, I don't want to beleaguer this thing.
That's all on three-thirty. We're going to get that out there next, next meeting.
Is that a yes?
Yes, a yes.
Lori, can we have a little further discussion on it? Discussion?
Sure. So, I actually agree with Mr. Brzezinski and Mr. Sebald that we, and I want to actually inform you too, that we are working on two adjoining ordinances that will change what is said in, won't change, that is not presented in this ordinance that are affected by other ordinances in the city, which are being updated, to include some of the things you've mentioned. And so, I just wanted you to know that we have not addressed density yet, but I do believe that that can be a zoning, a future zoning issue or, but, so, we, we do hear you and we're still looking to make this the best that we can. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that we have to have things in place so that we can regulate this properly. We're already having those discussions, so just wanted you to know that.
Any other discussion?
As a renter in the city, my concern is also the availability of long-term renters stock not being available. Erie has the fortune of being behind in the times, so I do always pivot and state that we should always take what other communities are experiencing as valid of what could happen here. So, I do hope to one day own a house in the city, but with our residents becoming predominantly renter stock, I do want everyone to realize that I am aware of the concern and it is something that I continuously bring up in conversation and I'm always advocating on behalf of what's going to happen to the residents who are stuck in renting housing. That's why the quality of the housing is a concern as well. So, we are doing things on our end of things to get things moving in the right direction. There has been a lot of things falling to the wayside and not addressed, and that has been a problem in our community, in our city. So, we're trying to address the things that are manageable and actually feasible in correcting. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance sixteen, three, forty, now known as official file ordinance fifteen, twenty, twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-one. Official ordinance sixteen, twenty, twenty-three. An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, Part One Administrative Code, Title VII, Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article 149, Firefighters Pension Fund, A by amending Sections 14904A, II, and F regarding the service increment, and B by amending Section 14909B and adding Section 14909I regarding the partial lump sum distribution option, PLSDO. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, Bill number sixteen, three, forty-one, and now known as official file ordinance sixteen, twenty, twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance sixteen, twenty, twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-two. Official ordinance seventeen, twenty, twenty-three. An ordinance appropriating a sum of six hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated liquid fuels tax fund balance and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, Bill number sixteen, three, forty-two, and now known as official file ordinance seventeen, twenty, twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance seventeen, twenty, twenty-three by yea, seven, nay, zero. Council file ordinance sixteen, three, forty-three. An ordinance appropriating a sum of one hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the state ARP motorcycle grant. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, Bill number sixteen, three, forty-three, and now known as official file ordinance eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council passed official file ordinance number eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, finally by yea, seven, nay, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-four. An ordinance appropriating a sum of twenty-one thousand, three, thirty-six, forty-four of program income generated through the Community Development Block Grant for the following CDBG CD-21 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance number sixteen, three, forty-four, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen, three, forty-four by yea, seven, nay, zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-five. An ordinance appropriating the sum of one thousand one hundred and forty-seven, forty-four of program income generated through the Community Development Block Grant for the following CDBG CD-21 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, Bill number sixteen, three, forty-five, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen, three, thirty, three, forty-five by yea, seven, nay, zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-six. An ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution from the federal operating grant FEMA for a one-year expense for fire inspector. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance number sixteen, three, forty-six, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen, three, forty-six by yea, seven, nay, zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen, three, forty-seven. An ordinance amending Article 533 Bicycle Licensing and Operation Ordinance by repealing Sections 53302, 03, 06, 07, 08, and 09 in their entirety.
Have a question again? It says we're amending and/or repealing. What are we doing?
It's repealing.
The way it's worded?
Yeah. So, it was brought to my attention after we posted, we, the Yeah. Um, so it was brought to my attention after we posted, uh, we, the city posted, um, the ordinance 533 as the example, and they posted a link to it as to why people can't ride their bikes on sidewalks. And, uh, there's about ten different laws on there, and, uh, one of them says you can't ride on sidewalks. One of them says you have to follow traffic laws if you're over the age of sixteen. And then the other eight, uh, brought a lot of mockery on us, uh, for still being on the books, so.
Some of them were doing both, then.
Yeah, so in some cases we're amending some, so the ones like, I think, some of the numbers are probably gonna get adjusted there, you know, so even the ones that stay on the books, they're gonna get their numbers adjusted and such, so.
Is that one?
Yeah.
So you're amending Article 533 and you're repealing 53302, 03, 06, 07, 08, and 09? Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys, the council file ordinance bill number sixteen three forty-seven, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three forty-seven by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to new business.
Mr. President, move the balance.
Second.
I make a motion for a separation.
Would you like to separate?
The transfers.
All of them?
Uh, the last two. The Community Development Block Grant, two there. Um, I will be abstaining from those as I am a paid employee for the MLK Center.
Say that again?
She's a paid employee. She does the dance program for the MLK Center. So she has to abstain. Any other separations?
Uh, number, um, I don't know if I should presume that the last two on your list.
ERA.
Purchase orders or?
No, under transfers.
So the last of the community.
That's the same one she just separated. Any other separations?
Just give us one second. Everyone's running through to see if they work for any of these agencies. They're having family members. You good? Everybody good? All right.
Uh, I'm gonna abstain on that one too because I have relatives that work over at the Booker T. Washington Center.
Okay.
I'd just say, I don't know, you know, that it's been a mother, father, sister, brother.
It's one of those. Yeah, it's one of those. All right. Any other separations? Call for the vote for the balance of the budget?
Motion to move the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. We have a transfer from the Community Development Block Grant from the Booker T. Washington Center, MLK Center Paramount Pursuits and Handicapped Curb Cuts to Street Reconstruction in a total amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred and seven oh nine dollars. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop has abstained, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Faulkner has abstained, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea five, nay zero with two abstentions. We have a second transfer sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop, from the Community Development Block Grant, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-three fifty-seven from Handicapped Curb Cuts, MLK, City of Erie Tree Removal, Booker T. Washington Center, JFK Center, Youth Leadership Institute, Boys and Girls Club, MCRC, which is, uh, multi, multi-resource center, multicultural resource center, City Housing Services, Community Improvement, City Summer Rec Operating Supplies, Demolition Administration, Demolition Other Services and Charges, UEC DC, St. Martin Center, YMCA Downtown Teen Center, ERA Housing Rehab, and ERA Lead Rehab. Transfer to Street Reconstruction. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski?
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yep.
Yes. So I just like to, we talked about.
We talked about this in caucus, you know, uh, this really hits to, you know, the core of, you know, um, my heart where, uh, this money is being reprogrammed, uh, that, uh, was intended to help these, uh, agencies and, uh, our community and now are being put to another use. Uh, we're gonna try and find a way moving forward to make sure that, you know, the money that we allocate, especially to helping our citizens, uh, go toward helping our citizens.
Yeah, conversations were had in caucus where we discussed that some of the red tape in the process will discourage people from going through the process to attain some of these funds, and we feel as though that's why we have such an abundancy of funds that get recycled back and forth. So we're having discussions to see if there's technical support, opportunities that we could give to the community or assist with the process so that they know what's available. Because as Michael Keys has been very vocal on the last few years, repurposing funds that were intentionally set aside for one reason is not a good enough reason to not use them because people aren't accessing them. Um, if most of the community doesn't know they're available, how are you gonna access something that you're not levied to knowing is available to you? So we're having conversations and we're gonna work going forward to see what we can do behind the scenes as well. Thank you.
I'll say one more thing. Not, not just behind the scenes, but also publicly. They're looking at doing, uh, Mike is the, uh, Councilman Keys is the chair of our Community Economic Development Committee. Uh, he's looking, having a, a, a meeting here, uh, probably in June with that subcommittee, um, to look at this closer. Um, one of our citizens, uh, had talked about having shovel-ready projects ready, and, uh, one of, that is one of the benefits. I, I do think we've always looked at streets as the shovel-ready issue there. Uh, maybe we could get a little more creative with it, but we keep, uh, we keep, we keep going back to that one because our streets keep looking the way they do. Um, but that is always sort of our shovel-ready default, and I think we've seen this, well, I'm only, I'm only a year in, so I've seen this every last year. Call for the vote if there's no further discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner abstains, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop abstains, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes five zero to two. This takes us to committee reports.
Ed, do you wanna start?
I remind everybody about opening day. Uh, Jazz was there with us and so was Mike. I didn't see the other guys. They're probably busy someplace. But, uh, guys didn't show up. I think it was a beautiful night. Nobody froze, which was wonderful. Just being at the ballpark makes you feel like, like you're young again. All right. Jazz is young. Me. Uh, I have a, a, uh, which one do I have? Civic, Civic Center meeting tomorrow, so I have nothing new to report on them yet. And other than that, that's all I got.
I was having technical support, but I now have access to my Zoom account, um, so I wasn't able to attend the blighted property, um, meeting that happened last Wednesday, but hopefully going forward I will be able to attend. We have an EMTA meeting coming up, uh, this coming, no, the last Tuesday of the month. You can register for those if you would like to participate in the EMTA. Uh, we would love community input if you're accessing the bus service, what things could be better, what things could, you know, um, increase ridership, um, what do you need so that you can start using the bus. Um, they're really working to increase the access that residents of the city have to the schedules. So unless we're hearing from the residents what could make things better, it's gonna be hard for the EMTA to address some of these issues. As a previous rider, I've always been vocal on the fact that second shifters do not have a ride home if you're taking the bus to work. So there's things and there's gaps that do need corrected, but unless more people are vocal about them, they're just gonna continue on. So, um, I did go to the opening night, um, based off of the news. It was record numbers from, I think, maybe like the last eight years. Two thousand nine, two thousand eight was the last time they had record numbers that they had this, this, um, week that passed. So that's great to see for the city. We love seeing people at a ballgame because there's no better pastime than spending with your family than outside under the sun at a baseball game. So that's still an American pastime, and a lot of people do still go to that. So make sure you're supporting our local league. Um, the Sea Wolves do phenomenal work when they're home, but they have had a whole change of team, so we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
As my colleagues mentioned, um, we had a great time. Uh, we, uh, I attended the Sea Wolves game and their home opener, and I also attended on Saturday, they had Jackie Robinson Day. They were, they, uh, celebrated, uh, the breaking the color barrier and, uh, organization of, uh, a hundred black men hosted, uh, a, a program, you know, uh, in the suite, uh, to celebrate that. So it was good to be, uh, that, to see the Sea Wolves reaching out and to, uh, making efforts to, uh, to include, be, uh, more inclusive and to make sure everyone's represented, even within the context of baseball.
Oh, right. Um, I did not go to the Sea Wolves game, but I have other news. Um, uh, the recent Sewer Authority, which I serve as the liaison for, um, they were happy to report to the public that they had a clean audit. Um, so that's always good news for our Sewer Authority. And I will be doing a tour of the facilities on, uh, the tenth of May. Uh, in terms of the Water Authority, uh, there is the monthly board meeting tomorrow, which I will be attending. Um, in terms of the Fire Department, it is recruitment time. I have flyers if anyone is interested. Um, applications are available online right now. There is only a very limited window in April to apply, to join, uh, and become, being called to serve, being kind of a firefighter. Uh, you can learn more about it at efd.eery.p-a.us/recrutement or come grab a flyer. Um, and also on fire, there were a hundred and sixty-nine calls for service with a hundred and seventeen for EMS. I always pull that out just so we can recognize how critical it is for emergency management services. Um, they provide such, such critical service across our city and supporting other municipalities as well. Um, for Police Department, there were a one thousand two hundred and twelve calls for service last week, including one shooting. Um, there were a hundred and ninety-seven disturbance calls last week, which the Chief of Police thought might be a record, um, might have been the good weather. Um, additionally, uh, there was a gun incident with two thirteen year olds being chased by other children in a car. So I want to heed the men, the messages that we heard in public comment today about how our poverty crisis is truly causing increased gun violence and other violence in our city. Thirteen year olds should not be running around with guns. We have to look at what's going on in their family system, what support services and prevention services they need, as well as what supports and mental health services they need within their schools and within the community. So I say we absolutely heed that advice because it is tragic to read these weekly emails and see that there are thirteen year olds, fifteen year olds, seventeen year olds involved with gun violence in our city. Um, back on the sixth of April, I did a tour with leadership of the Police Department, and I will be meeting with them every first Wednesday of the month discussing their crisis car. Um, I have an experience, a lot of experience in mental health services, and so I will be working with them to discuss that development. And lastly, for the Police Department, there will be an open house, uh, for family and friends on May sixth. And that's it.
Mr. President, um, I also didn't attend the baseball game. But, um, I'd like to, um, say to our youth, um, just keep what you're doing. And you college students, I applaud the professor for getting the students involved. Um, I was also a fellow college football player, so, um, use all the skills that you guys learn in those athletics to better your city, better yourself, better the people around you, and, uh, just continue to use your knowledge to help and make, make ours community a better place. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm pleased to say and happy to say that I attended the baseball game as well. But I'm gonna add a little, little flavor to it. When I was nine years old, I grew up in Newark, New Jersey. I had the opportunity of meeting Jackie Robinson and shaking his hand. He was the vice president of Chuck Full of Nuts Coffee Company, and they had a shop in downtown Newark. And that was a very, uh, exciting day for me and, uh, brought back a lot of memories this past weekend of, uh, what I did, uh, growing up in Newark, New Jersey. Uh, also, Spoon Summer Basketball League is gearing up and ready to go. We have our second combine coming this Saturday from ten to twelve for nine year olds up to sixteen. We have some competition this year. AAU is having their tournaments, which is drawing a lot of our kids there, and that's a good thing. So I've decided to extend registration, and every kid that has registered, even though they may not attend the combine, they will be drafted, they will be on a team. No kid will be left out. And I've informed AJ in Public Works that if any parent calls them and said they missed the deadline, all AJ have to do is give me a call, and that kid, those children, will be placed on a team. We have averaged close to two hundred fifty every year players, and I don't wanna drop now. Now is very important. I would like to boast that this is the thirty-third year that we've ran the league, and we have not had any major issues. The way things going now across the United States, I am concerned. However, one of the individuals that was at the baseball game, I was telling him about my concern. He said, "Mr. Spoon, you don't have to worry. Your court is like a holy place. Nobody's gonna do anything there." I hope that's true. But I believe that the presence of Erie Police Department has a lot to do with it. We will continue to provide our educational sessions to these young men and women, and we hope to have a great season this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
As far as my updates, Jasmine left this out of her report. We spent all day together. We, uh, we went to the Pennsylvania Municipal League in St. Mary's, so that was a two-and-a-half-hour ride, and, uh, GPS doesn't work in Allegheny State Park. Uh, so it was a two hour and forty-five minute ride. And, uh, so we spent the day. And so, we spent the day there. We heard about some of the policies that they're looking at at state level, just understanding how some of our state legislation restricting Pennsylvania has really, every single city in Pennsylvania is declining, people that want to complain about Erie. You look at the cities across the state, we are the largest city in the state that hasn't been financially distressed, right? I mean, all of them have been Act 47. Pittsburgh has a class one, or a first-class city, a different, they're under PICA, and all the rest of them have been Act 47 except us that are larger. And so, they talked about some of the policies that relate to that and Act 511 and how that's restricted. They also had a presentation about an anaerobic digester for the sewer and how they're using that to bring in revenue to Hermitage, something that I was really excited about until finding out that we didn't have one yet. Something I've been working on for two years. So, the other thing is upcoming work that we have lined up as the short-term rentals have been defined, now it's a matter of very quickly updating our registration for them. That's ordinance 330, so that we can have much higher standards for our rental properties. In some cases, our long-term rental as well as our short-term rental, making sure the places that turn over on a more regular basis have more regular inspections, the appropriated, or the appropriate costs that go alongside of that, appropriate fines to go with it and such. I expect to have that on the agenda next month, and, yeah, that's the main things on the agenda coming up. So, that's it for my report. Onto the solicitor.
I have nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll be brief. Had two very interesting things I did today. You know, we've been doing the SPCP Trust Building Series in Erie Public Schools and the middle schools and the high schools. We did the fifth one today. It was our last one, and they're just a great experience. I really enjoy the way the kids kind of open up and, you know, they get to know us, we get to know them. So, that was a great, and besides me, Michael Outlaw basically puts it together and runs it every time. This is the third year we've been doing this, and Chief Dan Spizarney was there, several other police officers were there, Elizabeth Hirsch, who's the district attorney, was there as well. So, there's a great group of people, and we usually get a good conversation going, and it seemed to happen again today. Also today, I went for a meeting up at Erie Bank, up above the mall, to discuss their new Parade Street branch, which, as you know, they announced. And I found out they need about four more months of planning yet to, and they showed us a new, a new design for what the bank they put in there will look like, and then they said it would probably take six to eight months to actually build it, so we're probably looking at next spring before that opens. But they want to do a lot of events kind of leading up to that, and there was a large group there, and the majority were African-Americans who are consulting about how can we get, you know, people really involved in this and help them move forward. So, that was, that was a great meeting. Yesterday, I went to the Community Shelter Services Ribbon Cutting for their new housing. It's like a mini-house, I think it's about three, small house, 350 square feet, and I got to tour it. It's really neat inside, and there's a mother, father, and two kids that have not been in a home for a long time that are going to be there. They're very, seem very happy about it. You might have seen them on TV a little bit. So, it's really, and it costs about $15,000 to put one of those together on their property there. And they have, they have the funding for two more, but they're still hoping to, it's about $15,000 each. They're hoping to bring in more going forward. And the last thing I just want to mention, you know, visit Erie is coming up on April 8th next year, but that's with the 2024 Eclipse of the Sun, which I don't know it's ever totally happened like this in Erie. They're expecting anywhere from $50,000 to $250,000 visitors to Erie for that. And again, that will be, I think it's around 3:16 PM on April 8th that that happens. So, that should be a great event for us next spring. I think we'll be really enjoying that. So, and that's all I've got. Thanks.